We have, in front of you, you have the, this particular schedule. It shows you the expenditures that are for the health insurance fund. We also have Ms. Susan Smith, who is the executive director with TML I E B P, who is going to make the presentation regarding the other item. But on this particular schedules that I have, the, it shows you the expenditures that we had on the medical insurance fund and the revenues at September 30th. And we had, in this case, we had eleven million, seven fifty-five, seven, seventy-four, eighty-five receipts and expenses of twelve million, four twenty-four, one ninety-eight. So we did have a decrease, or we actually used six hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four twenty-three from our beginning fund balance. So we ended the year with one million, three ten, seven twenty-two. As you move to page two, it gives you the information as of May 31st, 2013, for this fiscal year, and it shows receipts of seven million, two sixty-eight, two fifty-eight, with expenses or expenditures of six million, eight, eight seventy-seven, eight hundred. So there's a plus of three ninety, four fifty-seven. But we have to realize that not all the claims have been processed as of May. So that number, as we move towards the end of the year, it's going to be a lot less amount. Our presentation regarding the, the other area would be given by Ms. Susan Smith with the TML. Ms. Smith, you want to come forward? There is a handout of the PowerPoint, but she is just going to summarize it. She's not go, she's not going to go through it. She's just going to summarize it for you without using the PowerPoint.
Nice to see you. It's a pleasure to be here. I'm just going to go over really what Pete asked me to do is just review what the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act is going to do for the health plan for the next twelve months. And I've really broken it down into five categories. The five categories are addressed in your PowerPoint presentation, but I think it might be easier for me to just explain it to you, and then you have the data to research it later on. The very first thing is very easy. There are a lot of administrative requirements for us to be Patient Protection Affordable Care Act compliant. We brought the city a packet of the information. You will have to have your privacy notice updated, and you will have to post it on the city's Intranet so that your employees actually see it, and we will have to make a paper distribution to every employee in the organization. It cannot be electronic. In addition to that, the business associate agreement that the health plan has with some of its vendors has been updated, and so those business associate agreements will have to be redesigned, redeveloped, and we will have to distribute and get executed with all of your vendors that do work with you on the healthcare plan. In addition to that, it is a mandate from the federal government that we distribute a notice to all of your employees via paper on the exchange or the insurance marketplaces. So we have a sample notice for the city, and it will be mandated that we make that distribution before ten-one. In addition to that, by January one, 2014, we will have to incorporate an electronic fund transfer so that we can pay the providers in the city of Brownsville electronically and not paper. It's a mandate by the federal government, and so we'll be working with your finance department to set that system up, and we will have to be compliant one-one, 2014. If we are not compliant, there will be an administrative penalty assessed. In addition to that, your claims administrator, which is TML I E B P, we have some things we've got to do behind the scene. We definitely have to be compliant with converting to forty-ten to fifty-ten, and that's how the information comes in. We will assist you in the electronic fund transfers, and we're working with you on, on that behalf. In addition to that, all the diagnosis codes that the doctors identify on their bill will convert to I C D-ten. We'll be making that conversion with your providers. So our computer is actually being upgraded. We will be down one week in the month of December where we're making that conversion, and we won't be able to adjudicate claims. Now, let's go into the cost of the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act. This year, for the city of Brownsville, when we're talking with your finance people, we're identifying what the federal government is going to charge. Currently, they have two funds. One fund is POCORI, and that's the acronym for it, and it's a Patient Research Outcome Committee. We have to pay one dollar per participant on your plan per year. And so we have to calculate, how many people are we covering on your plan? And we add a dollar to it, and next July, 2014, we'll have to cut the check, and that check will be cut on, to the IRS on Form 720. And they've actually redesigned the form and identified the box that we're actually going to have to make that payment in. In addition to that, for the reinsurance trust fund, we will have to pay an additional sixty-three dollars per participant per year for that amount, and we'll pay it to the federal government. That dollar amount will be sent to Health and Human Services, and it will be paid November, 2014. And so when we're looking at your cost projections, we've included those two big dollar amounts. And for the city of Brownsville, right now, we're estimating that to be about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. So it's a very big dollar amount that we're having to pay for the government so that they can set up the marketplace, the marketplace insurance or the exchange. In addition, in addition to that, there is some major benefit changes that the Patient Protection Affordable Care Act has identified. One of the big areas, and we've been doing webcasts with all the employers we service, if you have employees that work thirty hours or more a week, a hundred and thirty hours or more a month, or a hundred and twenty seasonal days a year, as an employer, you're obligated to provide them healthcare benefits. And if you don't, and they go to the exchange or the insurance marketplace, you can be fined a penalty. And so we definitely need payroll and finance to be looking at. How many of those people do we have? How many of them have we not offered benefits to? If they decline, we will make the recommendation to the city that on their enrollment form, they identify a box where they actually declined benefits so that we have a paper trail that the city offered them healthcare benefits, and they actually did a declination notice, and we'll put it on file in case anybody ever questions, did the city offer it or not? In addition to that, there are two other areas on the benefit plan. The benefit, if it costs more than nine point five percent of the income in the box, in the box number two on the W-two form, you guys will receive a penalty if those people go to the exchange and they state that the city of Brownsville health plan costs more than nine point five percent of their take-home pay. And so there's a penalty attached to that that we would have to pay, and so we're very, very sensitive of how that cost is actually impacting your employees. Because for your employee population, you pay a big chunk of that at the city's expense. I think you're going to be taken care of, and we will not, will not have a penalty. But again, that's an area that finance will have to look at and make sure we're protecting your employees. It's for employee coverage only, does not include the family, and if you offer more than one plan, it's for your most cost-effective plan. And so if you offer two, and one's a rich plan and one's a standard plan, you're only being penalized on that most cost-effective plan. So that's another area that we would need to look at.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So let me make sure I understand that. If the employees' portion or contribution to the health plan is more than nine percent of their salary, then we get a penalty?
You, if it's more than nine point five percent, and the person went to the exchange and accessed the exchange and said, "The reason why I'm coming to the exchange is because my health plan's too expensive, and it's more than nine point five percent of my salary," then we would get a penalty.
Could I also, Pete, as long as we're going through this systematically and logistically, those employees that have those thirty-hour or the hundred and twenty-six days, all those little requirements, I would suggest that what we do is we identify all of those employees, and we offer a workshop. Because what happens is if they happen to decline it, I would like a detailed understanding of what it is they're getting, what they were able to get, what they're turning down, and, you know, in other words, fully explained. Because what happens is there is so much misinformation out there, and chances are that those employees that we have that have thirty hours are somewhere between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four because they're either going to school or doing something of that nature, or have two part-time jobs, and, and it'll skew the numbers. And so I think, I think it's extremely important that we do that.
Do we know how many people we have like that?
I don't know, I don't have the number, but we, right now, we are providing medical insurance for anybody that works more than thirty hours a week.
Yeah. No, what I'm saying to you is that we've got to make sure that they understand fully what this healthcare plan is all about, because there's so much misinformation out there right now that, and, and there's various reasons for that. But I think what you're going to see from this administration right now is a full bore explanation, and you've got an administrator out of the Dallas area that takes care of this whole region that will be available for us to, to contact in case we need it.
Yeah, we're, we're going to do that.
Yeah. No, but I mean, like I said, more than just say, "I decline it," because especially down here where you have a language barrier, you have all sorts of impediments, and the last thing we need is any sort of audit that somehow or another puts us in a, in a bad light with this. Because I tell you what, I think at the long run, what you're going to see about this healthcare plan is once it's implemented and once it's fully put to use and it's done right, we will all have a savings for the city. I think, I think that will be what the bottom line would be.
I think that's a great idea. I mean, and really, the more education we can deliver to your employee population, the better, and I definitely think we need a paper trail. So that we educated them, even if you did an onsite education meeting, that would be extremely helpful. We could document it, because the big piece out there is, are you taking care of your employees, and do they know how to actually purchase healthcare appropriately?
And, and there's no downside to it, because whether you're in the medical profession or you have children that you have that are going to be taken care of, or you're a young mother, you know, and, and you realize what you can do, whether it's a, you're a county employee or self-employed, it, it only adheres to your benefit, because now you'll understand it even better.
And then the other area that they're looking at from a benefit plan perspective is they want to definitely make sure when we're offering benefit plans that it is actually a minimum essential benefit plan. And their definition today is a plan of a sixty percent in-network payment, forty percent out of network. You guys are driving a lot better car than that right now, and so your employees, if they looked at that type of plan, they definitely would not be interested because the city's plan is so much better than that. But the other big key factor, and this is generating a lot of discussion in all the different areas and being miscommunicated time and time again, is they're actually looking at your out-of-pocket maximums and how much you're spending on the plan that's out of pocket, because they really want to try to minimize the employees' out-of-pocket expense. And for an employee, it's six thousand, two, six thousand, two hundred and fifty, and for a family, it's twelve thousand, five hundred dollars is your maximum out of pocket. And people are identifying, well, did the premiums roll into that out-of-pocket maximum? No, they do not get counted. If I go out of network, does that roll into that out-of-pocket maximum? No, that is out of the scope of that healthcare plan. And if it's an ineligible benefit, does that go into that out-of-pocket maximum amount? It does not accumulate because it's out of scope of your medical plan. So anything that is out of scope of your current medical plan does not populate into that out-of-pocket expense dollar amount, and so that does protect you. But it's very, very important that we make sure that your network benefits are available and that there's always a network benefit option for your covered individuals to access.
And that out of scope, Pete, when it comes up, includes medical outside of the country. You know, they're not going to cover you if you go to Matamoros or Progressive or stuff like that. And some people have asked that question, because especially on the border.
And then the two that we're actually waiting on that will come up next year in January, 2014, which will impact your plan in October, 2014, then the pre-existing for people nineteen years or older will have to go away, and it will be prohibited. And for plans starting one-one this year, it will be prohibited. It will not hit the city of Brownsville plan until October, 2014. In addition to that, in 2018, we'll look at the excise tax for the Cadillac plans. And so that's been postponed till 2018, and so those are two benefit areas that we will wait on. And before I close, I'd just like to mention the dollar that we said we'd pay per patient, per year that we will not have to pay up in until July, 2014. That number will be in existence until 2019, as the regs are written today, and it does go up. On the sixty-three dollar, there is multi-years for that number, but they state that number will come down. And so, again, these are regulations that will change, and we'll just have to keep you updated, but those are really what's going to happen this year, and I try to identify it as succinctly as possible. But you do have a PowerPoint presentation with the details behind it, and it actually quotes law in case you want to go do your own research. Do you all have any questions?
Well done.
Thank you very much, Susan.
We have been very fortunate to have Susan Smith working with us for the last few years with TML I E B P, because they keep us informed, they keep us up to date as to the latest of any health laws that are coming through, and they have been a great help for the city of Brownsville, and that's something that they've been doing so well for us. They've actually recover for all these stop losses, anything that we exceed our stop laws. We don't have to worry about contacting the stop loss insurance carrier for a refund. They do all this work for us. In the past, we've had problems with other carriers whereby we had to step up and, and actually write letters to the stop loss carrier, asking them how come we haven't gotten reimbursed for certain claims that exceeded the stop loss, and they've been very helpful, especially with Susan Smith under the leadership, the TML, and they do all this work for us, just, just to let you know.
No, and I, I think the ones of us that have been involved in your budget process over the last couple of years do have a great appreciation for all that they do, and certainly do want to thank them.
And, and I would echo that. I'm fortunate to sit in those meetings with you, and I am completely impressed with their knowledge and experience and ability to think ahead. And even today, when I just came down from there, she knew what I was going to ask before I asked it, and she was ready with the information and then some, and I think that, that they are an excellent example of a great service to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pete. Appreciate it. Okay, it's now five-twenty, I think?
Yes. Executive, executive session. Item A, consultation with attorney pursuant to Section 551.071 and 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real estate acquisitions. An executive session. Item B, discussion to consider an offer to lease the premises known as Aquetel Building Complex located at thirteen oh one East Madison Street, Brownsville, Texas, to the University of Texas System through its Board of Regents pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.071 on a matter in which the duty of the attorney to the local government body under the Texas Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act and pursuant to Texas Government Code 551.072 deliberations to discuss the lease of real property.
Motion and move to executive session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Motion carries.
in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state, one individual.
Mr. President, would you leave us to the invitation?
Father God, we come to you in the name of Jesus Christ tonight. First of all, to thank you for the life of the former pastor of the cathedral. Lord, we thank you for the way that he cared for the poor, the way he cared for others. Lord, I ask you to comfort those that are missing him tonight. Let them remember the blessing he was to so many people, and let it be a challenge to the rest of us to continue helping people in a way that encourages them to succeed. Lord, I ask you to place your blessing on this meeting today. Bless the mayor, bless the commissioners. Lord, we ask you to prepare Commissioner-elect Bartillo for the new position that she will be taking next week, and lead and guide each of us in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Action on items discussed in executive session. Item A, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2013 dash zero thirty-four to authorize the purchase of property at six oh nine East Eleventh Street and designating signatories.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action on item B, consideration and action to authorize the leasing of the Aquetel Building Complex located at thirteen oh one East Madison Street in Brownsville to the University of Texas System through its Board of Regents and authorizing the city manager, deputy city manager, or assistant city manager to execute any documents necessary to execute such lease.
Motion to table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mayor's report?
The mayor's report is, is quite simple, but I'd like to take this opportunity on behalf of the city of Brownsville and give my condolences to the family of Father Armand Matthews. He happened to be a personal friend of mine. I think he helped a lot of us, guided us through some difficult times that we've had in our lives, and he's been with us for a long time. And I just think that it's appropriate that we spent a moment of silence honoring him for the great contributions that he's made. I don't think I've known a man who believed in his heart about social justice as he did and was so convinced that, you know, it was important for each and every one of us to carry that particular endeavor to help the poor, the marginalized, and everyone else who needed help at any given time. And I can't think of a person who more willingly gave of his time and of his talent to help each and every one of the people that he encountered. So if we could take a moment of silence, I would appreciate it. Father Armand, there will be a mass tomorrow at ten o'clock for a service. He will be buried over the weekend in San Antonio as he, he was an oblate, and the oblates have a cemetery up in the San Antonio area, and the services will be held Friday and Saturday of this coming week. So that's my mayor's report.
Commissioner's report? Commissioner, go ahead.
Mayor, I'm going to move my report to next week because I'm awaiting an email from Senator Claire McCaskill of Missouri, whom we happened to meet by accident, but she is going to be in support of helping us save our tower at the airport. So I've got a presentation prepared, but I'm going to await her email so that I include it included in my report.
I appreciate that. That's very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Pete, I think, I'm sorry.
Presentations. The city's budget planning, planning calendar for fiscal year 2014.
Hello, members of the City Commission, this calendar is in your packet, but I just handed out so that we can just go over it very, very quickly. We started the budget process for our fiscal year 2014, the beginning of March, actually the end of March, March 28th. On page two, I'm just going to show you some of the key dates that we will be following in the adoption of our, our budget. July 16th, that's when we publish, public notice that we're going to have a, a, a public hearing on August 6th. On July 19th, that's just an estimated date, and in the past, around this time, that's when the chief appraiser certifies the, and we call it the 2013 tax rule, and the 2013 tax rule is for the budget of 2014. On August 6th, we have our, our first public hearing, and we have various items on August 6th. August 7th, the, we go to the Herald to publish the effective and rollback tax rates, and then on August 10th, they are published in the Brownsville Herald. Then on August 13th, there is a special meeting to discuss the, the tax rates, and at that time, we call for two public hearings for August the 27th and September 3rd. And the reason why we call for this to public hearings is that when we calculate the effective tax rate, if the effective tax rate exceeds, if we're going to adopt a, a, a textual, a tax rate that exceeds the effective tax rate, we need this public hearings. And in the past years, we've always, when we do the calculations, we always have the effective tax rate less than the current rate. And if we want to maintain the same current rate, we, we need these public hearings. Then on, on August the 27th, that's when we have the, well, let me, let me go back. On August the 16th, that's when we adopt, or actually, we, we filed the, the budget at the city secretary's office, and by law, that budget must be at the city secretary's office thirty days before it gets adopted. So if it's thirty days before, that means that our, our budget will be approved on September 16th. Then on September, on August 27th and on, on September 3rd, we have those two hearings on the tax rate. And again, on September 6th, that's when we, we, we send notice to the Herald that on, on the 16th, we will be approving the, the tax, tax rate and the, and the, and, and the city budget. And 17th, September 17th, it requires two notices, since it's an ordinance on the tax rate, and that's when the second notice of the tax rate gets approved. And that's the calendar that we will be filing, following for the adoption of our, of our budget for 2014.
Thank you, sir.
Item number four, consent agenda items A through D.
Would you approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five, consideration and action to appoint one member and reappoint one member to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee.
Stephanie, is Stephanie here? We'll pass that item.
All right.
Before we go into public hearings, there is an action item with relation to the Public Utilities Board, action item number 24. Would anybody object if we moved that item?
I'm going to move item 24 to the session.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Saucy and Mr. Terino.
Item 24, consideration and action on Resolution Number 2013 dash zero thirty-eight to authorize the Brownsville Public Utilities Board to initiate and participate in court action to support the city's gas utility system.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. You have before you a resolution, and I have provided a modified resolution reflecting the outcome of negotiations between the P U B and the city. Basically, the purpose of the resolution, P U B is in the process of constructing a pipeline to transport natural gas to a planned electrical facility within the city of Brownsville. What this resolution does, it authorizes the P U B to initiate or defend court proceedings if, in the event the eminent domain proceedings are necessary to acquire property for that pipeline. Section 2 of the resolution would require the P U B to come back to the city commission in a specific instance if it wanted to exercise that power of eminent domain. And section 3 basically requires, states that the P U B board will hold harmless of city Brownsville from, for any liability unless that liability is caused solely by the city. So that is the resolution. Mr. Trevino with the P U B is here to answer any additional questions you might have directed at the P U B, and I can answer any questions about the resolution.
Do the commissioners have any questions? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. If I might, I want to thank Commissioners and Motto for her service. You're going to miss it. Trust me.
Thank you.
She's not gone yet, though.
I have one more meeting.
That's right.
Have a meeting.
We can't tell her by yet, and we're not going to. She's going to stick around. You watch. Go ahead. Now we go to public hearings.
Public hearings, item number six, public hearing and action on resolution number 2013-035 to authorize the filing of an application with the Federal Transit Administration and Operating Administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C. Chapter 53, Title 23 of the United States Code, and other federal statutes administered by the Federal Transit Administration.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and Commissioners. During this presentation, I will briefly be discussing the Urbanized Area Formula Grant Program and the city's allocation for fiscal year 2013. I'll go over the proposed program of projects and the local match required for each. After the presentation, you may open the public hearing to receive any comments and then take action on this item. The Urbanized Area Formula Program, or Section 53.7 Program as it's known, makes funds available to designated recipients to assist in the development, improvement, and use of public transportation systems in urbanized areas. This grant application is a yearly requirement for the city to assess its share of federal grant funds for public transportation. This is not a competitive grant. The funds are appropriated by Congress on an annual basis. The funds are then allocated by the Federal Transit Administration to the urbanized areas according to the various formulas, and the allocations are published in the Federal Register. For the fiscal year 2013 year, the federal, the city's federal apportionment is $2,404,898. The program of projects we are proposing for the Section 53.07 funds includes capital, planning, and operating expenses. These type of expenses require a non-federal match. Most capital projects require a 20% non-federal match. In other words, for any of our capitals, for every $4 in federal fund, a match of $1 is non-federal dollars. Our proposal includes the use of two capital funds for these projects. Technically, one of these projects is considered preventative maintenance and is considered as an operating expense. However, we would like to take advantage of the federal rule that allows these expenses to be charged to the grant as capital projects at an 80 federal and 20% local match ratio. The second capital project is for the eligible construction cost for La Plaza at Brownsville Multimodal Terminal. On April 16, 2010, the Federal Transit Administration issued a letter of no prejudice to the city of Brownsville permitting the city to incur construction costs on the multimodal terminal using non-federal resources with the understanding that the costs incurred after the letter was issued may be reimbursed as eligible expenses or eligible for credit toward the local matching share if the project should be approved for federal funds at a later date. These funds are part of what we're also utilizing for the parking garage.
Okay, this is public hearing?
I'm still.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Our program of project also includes planning. Like capital projects, planning projects require a 20% non-federal match. These funds will be used for our regular planning activity. It involves participation with and support provided to both the NPO policy and technical committees. Finally, the proposal includes operating assistance. Operating assistance requires a 50% non-federal match of the net project costs. We are proposing to allocate $1,159,139 in federal funds, which will be matched by the same amount. These funds can be carried over for up to three years. This table shows the entire project, proposed program of projects. The city's contribution will be $1,470,580, which will be matched by $2,404,898 in federal funds. The city's contribution will come from the Public Transit Fund and has already been included in the fiscal year 2013 budget. One of the requirements for submitting this grant applies to hold a public hearing. The purpose of the public hearing is to obtain the views of our citizens on the proposed program of projects. A public hearing notice that included the proposal, the proposed program of projects was published in the legal notice portion of the classified as section of the Brownsville Herald. At this point, you may open the public hearing to receive comments, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Gentlemen, behind you.
Very scary.
Roberto Reste, one question is, the funding is coming, is it coming from the general funds? Or is it going to be, or is the city going to ask for certificates of obligation?
It's from the general fund.
My concern is that the general fund has been already used up a lot. How was it used last, from 2011 to 2012, the city somehow purchased 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 properties, nearly $4 million, and I don't know where that money came from. But if it's coming from the general fund, my concern is, would it raise our taxes?
I, I'm not sure that Norma would be the person to answer that. Probably Pete, but I don't see it. It's within the budget as far as I can tell.
This, this is not an agenda item relating to the budget. This is possible. This item has already been allocated. This is for fiscal year 2013 funds. That's, as usual, the funding cycle for the, for the feds are always like a year behind, more or less. But we're already in the current budget year for these funds. It's part of the general fund. I'm not sure how that relates to the question he's asked.
This money has already appropriated in the fiscal year 2013 budget that was approved last September.
So Pete, the general fund will go down a little bit because of this money, because we're looking at, what, nearly $2 million?
Well, the money is already appropriated for 2013. We actually don't know what the outcome will be because there's a lot of expenses, there's a lot of revenues in the general fund, and we won't know the true fund balance until the audit is complete for the fiscal year 2013.
Okay, one more question. On the 450 maintenance that is applied to all citizens of Brownsville who gets P U B, that money goes straight to the general fund? Is that correct?
Yes, and all of this will be discussed when we have our first public hearing on August the 6th.
Yes, okay, I'll discuss that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Norma, I think you've got to just...
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor. Just as we approach what Ms. Amora is talking about, and I don't know if this is inclusive or not, but something that has been a concern to many citizens, including especially Mr. Reste, the fact that we don't have any shelters on top of the bus stops. I have seen in my neighborhood, people in this blistering sun, sitting there for hours waiting for buses, or they missed the bus, or the second bus, or I don't know what it is. But not having shelters on these things, these bus stops, and this is the only transportation for these citizens to get around the city, I think that should be of utmost importance to this, to this commission. Because you can well imagine, we protect our dogs, we don't want them to suffocate, we don't want our citizens to suffocate, and by all means, let's include those. If you're going to get grant money, let's go ahead and include what's very, very basic to this city. That's important to me, it should be important to most of us. So I think that including the shelters and as part of your grant overview, I think that would be important and interesting. Also, extended transportation for wheelchair accommodation people. Are we getting more buses in that direction, or do we have just a limited amount? I'm not versed, I don't, I don't work in the bus transportation, but it seems that the disadvantaged are staying more disadvantaged. We should bring them up to par. If this is their only transportation and they don't have anything else, let's talk about it. Let's open up the conversation. How can we make it better for the citizens? Shouldn't that be a concern? I think that progress and, and, you know, limelight and prettiness is nice, but basic, basic needs for our citizens should be of the utmost importance in my point of view. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I just want to say that I'm very happy that we're building that parking garage. Downtown was built back before most people had cars, and to make use of our downtown, that parking garage is essential. To make use of the new intermodal that we just built, that parking garage is essential. And for anything new to come in downtown to help revitalize, that parking garage is essential. So let's do the best we can with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public, I entertain a motion to close?
Well, real quick, real quick, I just wanted to address Ms. Garcia. The bus department is doing an absolute fantastic job in the Land O' Lakes Price Road area because for years and years, people have had to go through the grass and uneven surfaces, and as of recently, the grant, what was it, the Freedom?
We have a little, approximately $2 million in bus stop improvement projects that we're currently working on. That's part of the improvements that we did on Central Boulevard, we've done with the West Side, we've done like Land O' Lakes. To come is the South Most area will be the next area that we'll be looking at, that we received huge delivery of shelters on Friday. We start, we're hoping to start putting some of those shelters up. So we do have a different pot of funding that is available for shelters and ADA bus stop enhancement improvements. On top of that, we also have under our 5310 program, which later on, under the agenda, I will be recommending to purchase two additional buses for our para-transit service, which is the curb-to-curb service for the disabled of our community.
Right, and I noticed that when they did do the sidewalks, they made sure that it was AD.
They have to be ADA.
Accessible, yes, completely, and I saw where they ripped out whatever was there and made sure that even on the corners and whatnot. So we are looking into that, and I can attest, in District 2, the bus department has been extremely proactive in pinpointing homes where the necessity is there and making sure that these neighborhoods are changed out, and so I applaud you all for taking care of that.
We have one more gentleman, I think.
Good evening, sir, gentlemen, and ladies. My name is Ignacio Andrade. I have a mother, 82 years old, innocent concerns of the buses. She has a hard time, she's a very active lady, and she has a hard time using the buses because some of them don't even have a route. And so as far as the shade and all of that is very important. She called me one, one time, she doesn't want to depend on anybody, she's a sovereign, 82-year-old, and she have to suffer the sun in the station or bus stops, and it is very important to have a shade because she, she and other people suffer a lot from that. I think it is very important for some shade for this older people, especially the older and the little ones.
And I'm getting there, so don't go too far with that one.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
No problem, sir.
Okay.
Can I ask? Just to inquire on Ms. Amora's report, how much percentage do you still have to go to, to fill all of the city of Brownsville? Because I understand, if someone, you know, have already been done, then there are others that haven't. Could you give us a percentage rate, please?
We have several grants. To put a percentage to it would be difficult right now. All I know is that we have the South Most area that needs to be done, and we have opportunities to continue to apply for areas that are still pending.
Norma, this is really kind of off the topic here, but I tell you what, why don't we do this to accommodate, if you get a chance, give her a little report of what has been there and at least, you know, get it to her. Okay, because we're really off the beaten path here, but I don't want to stop the conversation. Okay? Any other conversation, public comment?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It's an action item.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Norman. Appreciate it.
Item seven, public hearing and action on first reading of ordinance number 2013-1485-A to amend Chapter 18 of the Code of Ordinances by adopting new Article 3 Building Code, Article 6 Electricity, Article 8 Plumbing Code, Article 9 Gas Code, Article 11 Energy Code, and Article 12 Windstorm Code that deal with the International Building Code and the International Residential Building Code, and to repeal any and all versions of said sections in Chapter 18 and dealing with related matters.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Commission. My name is Aristo Gomes, I'm the Building Inspections Director. I am here to ask for your approval and to adopt the 2012 International Building Code and the family codes. Also, the proposal of this code is to provide guidelines for the safe of the construction and maintenance of new and existing structures. The International Code Council updates these codes every three years on new updates, new changes, and improvements to ensure the public safety. The last time we were here to change these codes was back in, or adopted back in May of 2008, and staff does recommend for these, to adopt these codes.
Would you approve?
Second.
Wait, this is a public hearing. I am too. Not a problem. Any other public comment?
Move to close.
Wait, 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 wait.
Roberto Reste, I built a house, and that's when I met Mr. Gomes, and we had disagreements with the building of my house. Some of this idea, sometimes we do, we really need to increase the cost, because that's what happened to my house, especially when I built the electrical part. I had to get a stainless steel box meter at almost $180. I noticed a neighbor of mine built a house, and he went back to the old system, about the $30 meter box. If we're going to be implementing this kind of codes, you know, sometimes we don't. Windstorm, as we all know, it's only for the counties, only the counties on the coast. And I had to pay $500 for, but that's a Texas law that they brought in. But it seems like they're not looking at this, it's really hindering a lot of things, especially the windstorm. Because if you don't have windstorm, you're not going to get approval, and we know that. But if, sometimes we have to look at the codes, and you said that the codes are going to implement help to people, well, if you have to reconstruct part of your home, you fall onto those guidelines. Is that correct, Mr. Gomes?
To answer his question, Commissioner, is the, on the aluminum that he's talking about on the mirror loop or mirror can, that's up to the utility companies, that's not on the building codes?
But my question is, if a person has to fix part of the home, will they have to go into the windstorm and all these new procedures?
Correct, that's by its day long. They have to comply with the windstorm.
What hurts a lot of individuals, and you've seen it, Mayor and Commissioners, a lot of people just leave the homes to fall apart. And we're seeing that in the South Most, West Brownsville, even the North Brownsville. So sometimes it's good for the gander, but sometimes it's bad for the goose. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Move to close.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Action item?
We moved to close the public hearing.
Yeah, we did.
Yes.
So it's already, it already passed?
Yeah.
Did you want to talk?
Okay. Move to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Stephanie, you're next.
Mayor, Commissioner, Stephanie's here on item number eight, but also item five, so if you would like, we can go back to item five real quick as well.
I can read item five.
Is that okay? Okay, why don't we take up action number five. Estella, why don't you repeat that one?
Let me read item number five. Are you ready, Stephanie?
Yes, thank you.
Consideration and action to appoint one member and reappoint one member to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Board.
Mayor, Commissioners, we just had Marilyn Cortina Zapata, her term just was up, and she'd like to be reappointed, and we strongly recommend that. She's very active. And Priscilla Orta Wener has resigned, so we'll need to reappoint, and we'll also need to reapply, we'll also need a replacement for Ms. Wener.
I was noticing on that list, the District Two representative is Evelyn Cantu, and she actually lives in District Four. So I'm noticing that on that list, we actually don't have any District Two representation, so I'd like to make the motion to appoint Rodney Gomez, who is a resident of District Two, who can represent us.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And I would like to move to reappoint Marley Zapata.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, and I'll make the correction for Evelyn.
And then we're gonna read item number eight. First public hearing on the proposed second substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2012-2013 HUD Community Development Block Grant Program Funding Allocation.
Mayor, Commissioners, I have a brief presentation for you. Our substantial amendment, this was actually a substantial amendment that was submitted to HUD a couple months ago. HUD selected some of the projects to be approved and requested further information on others. So the ones that I'm presenting to you today are those other projects that we provided additional information. The first change, due to the delay in the procurement for architecture and engineering services for the Southmost Community Center, which is the Dome, we went ahead and reduced, we're proposing reducing that budget to leave only available the architecture and engineering services, and the remaining budget has already actually been proposed for the new fiscal year, starting October 1st. So that $535,000 will be reprogrammed in the following year, in October, to finish construction. Actually, it's $550,000 that we went ahead and proposed, so the construction, architecture, and engineering fees, they will all be covered by October 1st of this year.
For which one?
For the Southmost Community Center Dome.
That was my question, thanks.
Okay, here, oh, that looks like a typo. But here is just a breakdown of it. Again, it's the Southmost Community Center Dome. Again, to repeat, the project will be completely funded. This was a temporary change, because we have a ratio, a HUD ratio, that we need to meet by July 31st, and because of that delay, it was not allowing us to make those expenditures and meeting those ratios, so we made the adjustment, and this will allow us to go ahead and finish construction. The other change is for the Portway Acres Park. We increased the budget to $343,000 to include several amenities that the community voiced concern about, and the Oliva Escape Park, we increased that budget for safety issues as well, that I'll bring to your attention here. We also eliminated the Belden Trail. There was additional funding from another source, so we went ahead and we plugged that money into the other, into the new coming year, the 2013-2014. Those projects have already been selected. Again, I'll bring you this, these, this list of programs August 6th, for your review and approval. The Portway Acres Improvement Project, this is located across the street from Perkins Middle School, if you're familiar. The amenities that we're adding, it includes walking trails, splash pad, picnic benches, playgrounds for special needs, and landscaping. Currently, no parks in the CDVG eligible area have special needs, so this would be a first, which is a great thing. It's CDVG compliant, because based on the census tracts, we'll be assisting, we'll be servicing approximately 81,154 low to moderate income individuals who live in the immediate area. These numbers come straight from the US Census and the HUD system that we use. We punch in the census tract, and it gives us the population to which are low income, low to moderate income, and how many people will be served. 58.6% of this area is designated low to moderate income area, so it satisfies the HUD criteria. This is a map of Portway Acres, in case you're unfamiliar with the location, right in front of Perkins Middle School. The initial budget was $200,000. Because there was limited funding, when we brought it to commission last year, we were only able to fund $107,000. They were grateful for that, they took it and said, "We'll do what we can." After having a community workshop, we, there were some issues and some needs identified, that we weren't able to accommodate with the budget we had, so the budget that we're proposing is $343,000, which will cover all of those. Again, this community input event took place on March 8th, there were over 70 residents who attended, it was a great turnout. They could express concern regarding safety, particularly lighting. It had, this park is deemed dangerous by the community, you know, with illicit activity in the evening. Other needs that they identified was fencing, benches, trash receptacles, and shaded areas. So all of these will now be, these amenities will be at the park. Now, if approved, we will have this budget. The reason we did this was because if we didn't increase the budget, we could put those amenities in, but it would delay the project, and we wanted the community and that immediate area to benefit this summer. So this will actually happen, in fact, we broke ground on Monday. The Oliva Escape Park is another project. This one is located on, in West Brownsville, right next to Pace Middle School. This will deter youth from the dangers of using the parking lots and streets as an alternative. This is a map, if you're unfamiliar with the area. Again, to prove that it's CDVG compliant, using the census tract numbers, there's approximately 3,015 low to moderate income individuals living in the area, which ends up being 62.8% of the area being low to moderate income. The initial budget was $150.00. They too had a community meeting and a lot of activity on their Facebook page, from a lot of avid skaters and parents who expressed great concern about the materials that were being used for the skate park. Prefabricated ramps can rot and become brittle in the heat, especially here in Brownsville. So, to have a safer park, we increased the budget to $450,000. These will have concrete ramps. The way this substantial amendment works is that we have a comment period, which started on the 26th and will end on June 26th. The HUD requires that you have two public hearings, but because we wanted a lot of community engagement, we went ahead and scheduled three. We had our first one at our Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee. The second one is here, and I'll bring it for your second public hearing, and as an action on July 2nd. I will then submit it to HUD. HUD will have 30 days to provide any feedback or make any comment. Again, these have already been verbally approved by HUD, they just requested additional information that we're now providing to them. So I can say with confidence that I don't foresee them having any issues with this amendment. Again, if the public comment is open right now, so if you have any comments you'd like to submit to our office, I encourage you to do so. We will include them in our substantial amendment package that we send to HUD. This is a public hearing.
Roberto Dest, I used to belong to that committee, too. Stephanie, one correction, I think you misstated Southmost, I thought it's a sports park. Is that correct?
Yes, the chart, the chart had a typo on it, I mistake.
Okay, okay, I just wanna make sense. Stephanie, what is the total budget for all the projects for this coming year, from the HUD? The total budget of this?
For 2013?
Yes.
What's coming in October?
Yes, what is the total budget that the HUD is implementing for all these projects?
Our new projects, there's $2.8 million that are available, and there's an additional $350 in uncommitted funds, and those have, those will be presented in August.
I understand those funds will be requested by private entities, like cancer, anybody like that, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts?
Those include social services and public improvement, yes, improvement projects from the Department.
The only thing I'd like to say is that it has changed from the last time I was there. I was with Alice Wilson, and most of the money was allocated way before years advance. When I was there, before we even could touch some of this money, it was already spent three years in advance. I'm very happy that now the money's gonna be used directly, as it's supposed to be used, not already allocated years in advance. So, there was never no money for anybody else. So, I do thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just wanna be brought up to date by Ms. Reyes, maybe she's not the one that I should be speaking this question to, but do all the parks have swimming pools?
No. And like I said, I don't mean to be disrespectful, but again, this has got to do with the HUD Community Development Block Grant, and if we wanna talk about parks and recreation, I think you got Chris Patterson sitting back there, and you're more than welcome to direct your inquiries to him, if you don't mind. But this one's gotta do with HUD, and again, I'm a little sensitive to this subject, 'cause we met with HUD not too terribly long ago, and we're trying to do the very best that we can, so that we can get the maximum amount of funds to this program for the needs of all the people in Brownsville, so.
Okay, since we were talking about parks, I think that-
Right, right, no, no, I'm just, yeah, I understand, okay?
That was my concern.
But Chris is back there, in case you wanna corner him. Any, anybody else on public comment?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, yes, sorry, I'm confused myself. Thank you.
Item nine. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2013-1570-A to amend ordinance number 2013-1570 of the City of Brownsville Code of Ordinances, Section 310.27 of Chapter 310 Grants, and dealing with the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee.
Mayor, Commissioners, this ordinance has been passed. There was a typo, which is the only reason why we're bringing it back for your approval. In the ordinance, we say at least one-third of the committee members will be required to represent areas that are designated as low to moderate income areas, and may do so either by having a business interest, or by living in the low or moderate income area. We changed the one-third to 30%, because we have a committee which consists of 11 members, and so you can't have, you know, three and a third. So, we changed it to 30, just a grammatical error there.
Okay, any comments on that?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 10. Public hearing in action to authorize submission of a request to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development for a one-year extension to the City of Brownsville's three-year consolidated plan for the period of 2010 through 2013, which includes extending, the ending date to September the 30th, 2014.
Mayor, Commissioners, this request was actually because the city was part of the Rio Grande Valley entitlement community, which is all the HUD entitlement cities in the valley. We all submitted a regional consolidated plan. We did so for 2010 through 2013. They're typically five-year plans. We went for a three-year plan, because we understood that the US Census was gonna have new numbers. HUD, now that there's a new system, the consolidated plan is submitted electronically, and all of us, well, most of us are on different fiscal years, it was gonna be problematic for us to continue to submit as a region. So, we're doing so individually, and since I have new staff, none of which, none of us are very familiar with developing the consolidated plan, and given the situation and then recent concerns with HUD, we wanna make sure that if we're gonna do something, we're gonna do it the correct way, 100% the way it needs to be done, and therefore, we asked for a one-year extension from HUD to allow us to do that. And they approved it, with just, we had to bring it before you-
Sure.
-as a public hearing.
We have the letter from HUD saying that they approved the extension?
Yes, I do. It's a conditional approval. The city must submit by August 15th a substantial amendment in accordance with our citizen participation process, extending the current consolidated plan. Additionally, the city is still required to submit a one-year action plan, which we are doing and bringing to you August 6th.
Public comment? I hear none.
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thanks for Portway, Stephanie.
Item 11. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2013-018 to rezone from Dwelling G classification to general retail G classification for 2.4 acres out of Lot 2, Block Double D of Brownsville Land Improvements Company subdivision, located near Boca Chica Boulevard and Coria Street.
Mayor, City Commission, this is a property located on Central Boulevard, right next to HEB, right behind the Easy Pond facility. If we can go to the map, or...
Sure.
So as you see, the HEB is currently here on the corner, this is Coria, Coria Street and Boca Chica. This is a property that HEB has owned for a long time, and they're trying to clean up their, all their sites, and they wanna rezone this property. They also, at this point, they're proposing a parking lot. Initially, at planning and zoning, there was a lot of, there was some neighborhood opposition. The Planning and Zoning Commission told us to go back and work with the neighborhood, work with HEB, and try to get a solution. We did so. Episcopal Day School volunteered their facilities to have that meeting. HEB has a, if you can go to the letter, this is a letter from Bury. No, the, that one. After that meeting, with a couple of neighbors, probably about 10 or 15 neighbors, I would say, the HEB rep was there. Can you go to the site plan, the next one down?
Site plan?
The site plan, the next one.
Come on.
And what they are proposing is a fence, a concrete fence along this side of the property and this side of the property. There's some homes back here, and some, there's a lot of cut-through traffic right now that goes, you know, that's if traffic backs up on Central, it kinda cut right through here. This is what their site would look like. The, they've also agreed, I think, I believe, with Episcopal Day School. Episcopal Day School uses this parking lot sometimes when they have events, as overflow parking. So overall, we bring you a good solution to the zoning case. There's a couple of other items that HEB agreed to, including security, a 40-foot buffer, as you see, from the residential property line to the first parking spots, so a landscape buffer of 40 feet for noise. So we believe this is a good solution that the neighborhood and HEB win, so we ask for your approval, and this is a public hearing.
Ramiro, did you have this map presented to the community, those who were in opposition?
Yes. HEB, HEB did show up, not only, I think, their engineering, but a representative from HEB was there, and they were showing this.
And does that include the list of 55 names that signed to oppose this?
That, that original opposition was at P&amp;Z before we went back to the community, and I'm not sure how many of those, how many of those have retracted or not, but we did get some general community approval on this plan. There are still some opposition, there is still some opposition, but we believe we've addressed most of the concerns between both parties.
And I think it's a good way to go about, to reach out to the neighborhood. I talked to the HEB officials and said that they really needed to reach out to the neighborhoods, and I think they had a pretty good solution. I think we ought to continue that particular behavior, because I think it's good for everybody.
That's really cool.
Any other public comment?
Do you know what the concerns were, Ramiro?
There are some concerns. In the past, there's been some truck traffic that goes through here. There's some, you know, they didn't, they don't, there's obviously a lot of traffic concerns on Coria and Boca Chica. You know, traffic backs up when the school's there. Coria has other issues than just its zoning. You know, the right-of-way is a little narrow, obviously the traffic, but the main concern was traffic, and the access of the HEB trucks. So I'm sure some of the neighbors will talk to those concerns. So, I'm sure some of the neighbors will talk to those concerns.
My name is Ray Heygood. I live at forty-nine North Korea. I live at forty-nine North Korea. My wife Cindy, she came up, in case you have any questions about that petition. Whenever all this began, we began visiting with neighbors and asked them to support us in our opposition to this rezoning. This has not really been satisfactorily addressed to us. Yes, Mayor, the HEB did come out and meet with us. We appreciate it. As we went back to our homes and we met again, we talked about it. And the picture here, we are on the south and the eastern side of this neighborhood, our family. And our house is just a little bit past that brick wall there that they intend to build. And as a result, we're real sensitive about rezoning because we're just, you know, we're on the battle front. We have commercial all around us. And we asked the zoning commission to please consider some of these things. We don't, we don't see where the additional traffic has been addressed. If anyone's had kids at Episcopal, you know what goes on out there at, for about fifteen or twenty minutes in the morning and the evening. It's really bad. But even during the day, I was out in my yard even this afternoon and doing a little gardening and all, and it's just constant traffic there. HEB puts a parking lot in there, people say, whoopee, I can park here and go in from Coria, I can exit onto Coria, I can get in and do my shopping, I don't have to go on Central or Boca Chica. And we anticipate, and then, I'm sorry, beside that, we're looking at additional employee parking. They're going to use part of this for about a hundred and thirty party employees over a day's shifts to park in there, too. So, there's additional traffic there on Coria. With the, and then also, if you notice where their loading dock is, HEB also intends to go down to the middle of that property, cut through, pass the gas pumps, from what we've been told, for their trucks to exit. Right now, those trucks exit right along the store building. They start exiting, what, a hundred feet? I don't know if it's that much closer to our houses. It's a tremendous noise. We hear them hitting those speed bumps up there when they're exiting by the store. And it just, it's really a concern. But traffic, parking lots have their own peculiar, particular problems. As far as, yes, they'll have security, but will security be there when people park in there and do things that they possibly shouldn't be doing? So, we're still concerned about it. We're concerned about the traffic, you know, we're concerned about, we'd like to be able to help Episcopal to have someplace to park, but that's not our main objective in life. But it is to have a, you know, to have a place to live that's quiet as it can be, with minimum traffic. And also, we feel that if HEB moves in there, we don't know what they're going to do in the future. I mean, you can't even guarantee that. If you prove this rezoning, they say they're going to do a few things. Well, they do a few things, but what's to keep them from extending a loading dock all the way down to that fence? We don't know what they might want to do. They're not paving this or wanting to rezone this so they can make Episcopal and the Lutheran Church feel good. They're doing this for business. And with us right there on the forefront of this, and we've also talked to neighbors, Ms. Ortiz, retired schoolteacher here, is just right outside of the two-hundred feet. And all of those names that you have on that petition go completely deep into the neighborhood of these people who've agreed to support us, and none of them have rescinded their support, to support us in our efforts to keep this property from being rezoned. One last comment I'll make is, in the zoning, in the zoning commission, the word progress was used. And I was even told by one person, you can't block progress. Well, I don't want to block progress, but I don't want progress to cause the value of my house to depreciate because the neighborhood depreciates because of our wonderful HEB store extending too close to our home.
I'll be honest with you, when HEB built in Southmost, they came in and kept their word on a hundred percent of everything that they promised. They helped out Cromack Elementary, they helped out the neighbors, they put a couple of people that were going to be put out of their way into a better place. And the company has, in my opinion, a very good reputation.
Yes, sir.
And from what I've seen, and from what, over the years and what they've done, if they, if they tell you they're going to do something, they're going to do it, and they keep their promises. If that's, I know that that, you know, but just to let you know, you know, in my experience, and I'm sure the mayor also witnessed talks with them, anything HEB promises, they know, they know that there's certain, there's going to be certain inconveniences to the neighborhood. But by the same token, you know, I mean, they've got to, they've got to provide a service also for our community.
Ramiro, with regards to the concerns that he stated with the increase in traffic, did you have a chance to address any of those concerns with them?
Basically, the only thing, by building this parking lot, as you can see here right now, it's just an empty, an empty lot. But by building the parking lot, they would only be adding, I think, one more access. And they have, they have also agreed to give us a non-access easement along Coria so that they can't necessarily have hazardly just go and build an access. They would have to come before the planning, before the planning department and amend their plat, and it would be just a complicated process.
Are there current sidewalks in that area?
No.
No.
So, that would be part of the designing, that they would have to implement the sidewalks?
Well, yeah, yes, of course. They have to, this new addition of this parking lot would have to comply with the new landscape requirements, new sidewalk, every, all the requirements, and they are doing that.
And to address his concern, because I know he was concerned that what's to prevent them from building something else? We can assure that they will not build something else as opposed to what plans they're proposing, correct?
No. Well, once they get the zoning, they're able to build up to afford commercial. In the case of an HEB, the only thing I can envision happening is that eventually they'll expand their parking lot, or they'll expand their store if they deem it so that they need it, much like they did on, much like they did on Paredes and Eight-O-Two. But they don't know that yet. HEB doesn't know what they're, I mean, right now, the only thing before you is this rezone and the parking lot that they want to do, so.
And Ray, thank you very much for coming, Ms. Heygood.
I just wanted to ask you one thing.
Sure, please do so.
It doesn't make sense that a huge parking lot will be made if HEB is not planning on expanding. And that's what we're concerned about, is the expansion. We wanted to keep our area residential without the commercial traffic, and that's what we're concerned about. Why would they need so much more parking if they're not really planning on expanding in the future? HEB's a great store. I shop there all the time.
I'm sure you do.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Are they adding a car wash?
Can I make one other point, please?
Sure, Ray.
The entrances to that area, one of them is right there where they would build a fence. It's just right across the street from Episcopal. And then the other one is down behind the store.
Sure.
Over there. I asked them, the last time that we met, I asked them, would they consider to reduce congestion right in front of all of our houses? Would they consider replating and putting the entrance to that parking lot in the middle of this section instead of having it all the way down there by us? And the representative from HEB is here, and I asked him, what was his response? And he said they would not even consider it. So, that's another area. I just, there's some things that could have been done maybe a little better. I didn't understand they have to replat, but to put another entrance, right?
They would have to come back and amend that.
Okay, well, that, I mean, that would even help to give us some relief of traffic backing up, trying to get into that parking lot.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Ramiro, I have a quick question. What are they building on the front end that they're going to eat up some of the parking spaces that they need additional parking? Are they building the car wash or anything?
No, no, not at this point.
They're not building anything.
Everything we've been told is, they're just going to build a parking lot. There might be a car wash in the future, we're not sure, but...
I had a question. What are they, what is Boca, what is HEB building on Boca Chica? That's a piece of my district, where Grease Monkey used to be. Are they building something there? I didn't...
No. My understanding is they acquired the property, and they, obviously, they demolished the Grease Monkey, so.
If you don't, if y'all don't mind, we've got to kind of stick to the chin, okay? Sorry.
Roberto Desti. Let me, I go to HEB there a lot, Coria, I go down the street a lot. One, the concern is not nothing, but there's hardly no parking, there's not enough congestion. We're overblowing this thing. If you want to come to my street in Caipulco, there's more congestion there than here. There's lack of parking on the school there. There is. They park outside when they pick up the kids, and I've seen that, if you go down there. That area is also an area for, I think it's a bad area. Been reported people going there. It's a weird area. It's bad. And anywhere, anytime there is, wooded areas like that, crime comes out. And that's why I look at that. And if those residents want to have a cleaner area, they should. Most of the trucks come in through Central and they go to the back of HEB. I see them all the time. I never seen them go down the street. There's two speed bumps down there, and I know that. And I go there basically two to three times a day, so I go there a lot. But basically, it's a good improvement, it'll be great for everybody, and also, I don't think they're going to build no car wash. I run the other car wash. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Okay.
Move to close.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Action item?
Move to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. It's one, all ayes over here, that's four to two. Item number twelve.
Item number twelve, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2013-023-S to allow a duplex specific use in a Dwelling A Classification for Lot 21, Block 2 of Harbor Heights, Section 1, located at 513 Edmonton, Edmonton Court.
Mayor Commissioners, this is a specific use to allow a duplex on Edmund Court. This was before the Planning and Zoning Commission on the last meeting, and all in favor of the approval of this duplex.
Are there duplexes in that area?
Yes, ma'am, there's one on Devon Drive, right on the entrance, and one on Rancho Viejo Boulevard. And then a couple of...
Nobody was opposed to building this?
No, actually, one gentleman wasn't in favor. I don't know if...
Oh, that's cool.
Okay.
Motion to approve?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. Motion to close public hearing.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Anybody else have any public comments? Okay, now I'll entertain the motion.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item thirteen, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2013-027-S to allow apartment use in a Dwelling A Classification for Lots 4 and 5 of Block 1 of Arretta Brothers Subdivision located at 1346 La Posada Drive.
Again, we have another map projected on the screen. The area shaded in red is the area requesting the specific use. This is for a duplex. Right now, there's a duplex right now on one, and the gentleman or the owner is proposing two more duplexes on site. We have the site plan, and redo the site plan to accommodate all the necessary parking spaces for the, all duplexes. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval, all in favor of the specific use.
So, this would fall under the new guidelines that Mr. Gami's proposed with regards to the taxing of the apartment?
Yeah, they will follow that, on the new check, check the lease for the apartment, yes.
Okay. Any public comment?
Move to close.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item fourteen, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2013-028-S to allow a lot commercial G classification, specific use in a medium retail G classification for Lot 6, Block 2 of Pasto Verde Subdivision Phase 1, located at 31128 FM 100.
Again, we have another map projected on the screen. The area shaded in red is for the specific use for pre-owned cars. This is State Highway 100, and on the side, on the west, is FM 803. This is very close to Los Fresnos, but it's part of the city. Again, this was before the Planning and Zoning Commission, all in favor of the, of the specific use for a used car lot. This is a Charlie Clark Annexation.
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
I guess, no public hearing? No, okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item fifteen, Public Hearing in Action on First Reading of Ordinance Number 235-2013-030-S to allow a medium retail G classification and apartment F classification specific use in a, in a professional office G classification for Lot 1, Block 1 of Templo Bethel Subdivision located at South Central Avenue and Villa Madrid Avenue.
Again, we have another map, and the area shaded in red, right on top of the green, right on the middle, is on Central Avenue, very close to Boca Chica Boulevard. The gray area is very close to the airport. This is to allow some retail, light retail, and some apartments, a one-floor apartment, one-story. We have a site plan, again, for this specific use. Again, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this specific use. This zoning allows just professional offices, that not allow apartments, which is part of the specific use.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that, it allows...
The green area allows, or the zoning, which is shaded in green, allows professional offices, and the owner is proposing medium retail and apartments. Can you put it on the site plan, too?
Do we have any public comment on this one?
This is the area.
What, are there other professional offices around there?
No, not on that area. This is the facade for the professional or the medium retail, and these are the facade for the apartments or duplexes.
And which one faces the main street front?
The medium retail, the offices, and the apartments are behind.
What's the closest professional plaza that we have to that location?
Two.
Good question.
Well, on Villa Mitchell, there's a lot of, on Villa Mitchell, south of Central Avenue, and on Villa Mitchell, there's a lot of commercial area, retail, warehousing, but this has happened to be on, on the middle between Boca Chica and Villa Mitchell.
Can I hear from...
And this is the site plan. As you can see, the little square or rectangular shaded in kind of yellowish is the apartments, and the blue are the retail. And as you can see, the access, there are only two access on Central Avenue. There's no access on Villa Madrid, or there's no access on San Antonio Drive.
So, in order to get to the apartments, you have to come in through Central?
Well, on the edge, on the very top.
I don't see it.
Right here. This is the access for this area, and this is the access for this area. Of course, they can get through here for the light retail.
I'm glad to see that they included a playground.
Good evening. My name is Lynn Ricks, and I live at 4657 San Antonio Road. I have here a copy for you all. I don't know if I can bring it up or someone. It's a petition from neighbors in the area. I believe within the two-hundred-feet area, we have a hundred percent of the neighbors opposing this. It's all residential. We have no other apartments in that area. We have no other commercial there. We have a very nice neighborhood... a very nice neighborhood, which we would like to maintain. When I took the petition out to get it signed, I didn't have to go looking, people came looking for me. I actually had people on the other end of San Antonio on Clubhouse. We are gravely concerned about the traffic, because once they exit the area, you can turn on Central Avenue, but probably the easiest access would be to straight out San Antonio Road. That is a residential street. Those people were, were very concerned. We have almost 100% of all signatures on Villa Madrid, it's a cul-de-sac subdivision, we have almost 100% signatures on San Antonio Road. Between the property and San Antonio Road is a drainage canal. We're very concerned as to what's going to happen to that, to the drainage situation. It's, like I said, we have a wonderful neighborhood, we love it the way it is. If it was to be zoned residential, I don't think you'd have a single person complain. But the same owner tried to rezone the property about 12 years ago, and told us he needed three-story apartments there for it to be worth his while. Now that has changed, but like I said, there's a lot of opposition, and I'm sure you'll hear from a lot of my neighbors. Thank you.
Just real quick, just to let you know, I am your city district commissioner, yes, you could have called me as well.
Oh, okay, oh, I started to, but like the people over on Clubhouse who wanted to sign, I just didn't know how far outside our boundaries are exactly. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Yeah, our boundary is within 10 feet, so, because you count that canal. Anyway, I'm George Ricks, I'm her husband, and if it's rezoned, if it's approved, what's to prevent a new owner from coming along and building whatever they want to build? Is there anything that prevents that?
I think...
Ramiro, I think the question goes to you.
Yes.
What's to prevent a new owner from coming along and building anything they want if it's rezoned?
Well, this is a specific use, so it's specific to this application.
Okay, all right, there's a for sale sign there, so this morning, I called, and found out that it's three acres, of course. He said, "The front acre on Central is going to be used, just like you said, professional building." The other two acres are available, nothing's planned for those. I know you have some plans for it, but this kind of surprised me. I could buy it, in other words. It's there, it's available, and that's what I'm worried about. I don't, I don't know why it's for sale, if you have...
I have no idea.
Maybe the city will buy it.
I think, given that they didn't submit the signatures to us before this meeting, I think, and if it is protested, if you have 100% within that 200-foot radius, they're going to require, the owner will require six out of seven votes. But I think it would be good to have some more time to confirm those signatures, and then bring it back before you, once that is confirmed, so.
Did you go through the zoning and...
They went through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it...
And was there a protest at that time?
There...
And they still approved it?
No, this is the first time we see these signatures, so we'd like some time to confirm.
In other words, it's not coming to us as a protested case?
No.
It passed the Planning and Zoning Committee?
Yes. There's, there were neighbors opposing, yes, but the protest can only be before this commission, and like I always, let them know that they have, so, to a date, to bring all the signatures. Right now, if you decide to continue, it's your, your decision.
So this is item number 14, is it?
Fifteen.
Fifteen, I'm sorry.
I'd like to make a motion to table, and if it would be possible, Ramiro, if I could, because right here, it doesn't even list the owner of the property's name, it lists his corporation.
Well, the only thing is that public comment...
I believe the gentleman is here.
The owner is here.
Oh.
But we attended the planning and zoning, and we were sort of told, like the man before us, that this was progress. And we feel the same way he does. Progress is something that Brownsville needs, but progress at what cost? To the citizens and the residents who live there.
Okay, public comment is still open.
Good evening, my name is Tommy Hunter, and I live on San Antonio Road directly behind this also, and it's a neighborhood, it's residential, there's no apartments, there's no commercial at all on Central Avenue, on San Antonio, on Augusta, on Villa Madrid, anywhere, and we want to keep it that way.
It's a very nice neighborhood.
So please help us. Thank you.
It's a very nice neighborhood, it's very well maintained.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ms. Mayor and the Commissioner. I'm the owner of the property, my name is Anant Tuturkar, and I want to present to you... Can you go back to the side plan? Okay. If you, the people who have resisted this, it is a natural tendency, whenever something new comes up, people tend to resist. The San Antonio Road, if you really go and see it, is really not a road, it's just an alleyway, and it services a few houses at the back. This project has nothing to do with the San Antonio Road. San Antonio Road and this property, in between, there is a ditch, that's a drainage ditch, that's about 40 feet wide. The road that, or the east way that we have made to go to the apartment complex at the back is in our property. It is significantly, it's about 40 feet on the other side of the ditch. San Antonio Road is on the other side. This property, under no circumstances, will be on hindrance to San Antonio Road. Entrance is a front on San, on Central Boulevard, on Central Avenue, there is an entry to go to the professional office, and those professional offices will be a medical office, a dentist office, and the normal services that a neighborhood will use. On the back side, there is a single-story apartment complex, but that will be a beautiful complex, they all are two-bedroom apartments, and it will be much nicer in appearance than what the rest of the neighborhood is. The neighbors, I understand they are worried about the word apartment, but that's not going to be a classical apartment, neither the frontage of the, the complex that we are proposing is going to be a shoddy complex. I have built two complexes in Brownsville, and I had a similar type of resistance before. One complex that I have built, it is on Alton Glow, it is across the Glow lumberyard. At the time when there was a resistance, it passed through, now we build a complex, and it's 75% of the, of the customers of that complex is the neighborhood itself. I assure you, it will be the same thing over here. In that area, there is a great need for a physician's office, a dentist's office, a hair and salon type of thing, which is a neighborhood utilization staff. Like I said, there are apartments in that area, if you take, go up to Central Boulevard, it's a commercial area, and there are apartments built right across the Clubhouse Road. If you go down to the Billy Michel, while going to the airport, you will see there are several apartments. They are in the range of 1,000 yards. So I do not think that this project will be on hindrance to this, to the community. This will improve the image of the area, also it will improve the tax revenue to the city, and it will be a great service to the neighborhood.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Just one clarification, this property does not have access to San Antonio because of the canal, and because San Antonio Road is a private road, it's not public. And on Villa Madrid, it has, the subdivision on Villa Madrid has a non-access eastbound along Villa Madrid Avenue. So the only access that this property has is Central Avenue.
There's no way they will be getting into the community, neighborhood?
No, unless they jump off.
The city still has access to that canal in the event of flooding, cleaning, and all that?
Yeah, they do, yes.
Okay.
We move ahead.
Well, on the, on the exit onto Central, you know, you do have that canal, you have San Antonio Road, and we're going to have two roads right there together trying to go onto Central, and there's school buses turning onto the other block on, of San Antonio Road. But anyway, I would, I wish y'all would come out and look at the area. Villa Madrid, there's beautiful homes there, nice people, and, and when they bought their properties, they were, they were told there was going to be a church there, and that was fine, because they asked about that lot. Well, now everything has changed. And then also, on, on our road, San Antonio Road, that, that narrow road, there's large lots there, and, and nice homes, everything is nice, everything's clean. So I took offense when he was saying that this was going to improve the neighborhood because everything looked kind of, I, I don't remember the exact words, but he kind of downgraded us, and I didn't like that.
It's a very nice neighborhood.
I wish y'all would come look at it.
Very established, yeah.
I wish you would come look at it. And we could have some more signatures as well, because there were a few people that weren't home, so.
I'll, I'll arrange that.
Okay, we have public hearing, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve?
Motion to table.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second? Because that's the first one.
Well, my concern is, there was quite a few signatures collected.
No, I understand, what I'm saying is that there's a motion on the floor, and I think Robert rules of order says, is there a second?
First. The motion that's on the floor first, you give them priority.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm saying, is I think that's the way the rules read. There's a motion, now is there a second, or there's no second?
Second.
Second? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so it doesn't carry. Is there a motion to table?
I would like to make a motion to table, and for the reason that I would like to, quite possibly, maybe some of us go out and see the area, and talk to the residents there also. I really like the plan that's proposed, I would like to address the concerns that you have.
There's a motion to table.
Second.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion to table, say aye?
Aye.
Okay, you got four ayes?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, it will be tabled.
Item 16, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2013-901-CO to rezone from dwelling Z classification and light, light retail V classification to general retail G for 50 acres of Lake subdivision and J.C. Bennett subdivision located at FM 511 and Baker Road.
Mayor, City Commissioner, items 16, 17, 18, and 19 are essentially the same area, we just had to do it differently because it's different properties. So I'm going to cover, I'm going to cover the entire area of all items, and then Estela can read them individually, and we can go through the process like that. So this area is currently zoned second commercial, and, and obviously, it's 550, it's 511, whatever you want to call it, and it's, it's, instead of individually waiting for owners to come in and rezone, and then having some haphazard fourth commercial, third commercial, whatever that owner wants, what we want to do is, we want to be continuous, and we want to have one zoning throughout the whole area. So what we're proposing here is to, to upzone from second commercial to fourth commercial, it's a general retail, we feel it's, it's an adequate use for the, the entire corridor all the way up to Old Alice. So these are just different cases, but, so we, we ask for your approval tonight on fourth commercial for the, all these cases, and this is a public hearing.
Now, do you want me to read all the rest of them at this point? Or one by one, are you going to act on one by one?
I, I don't know what the process is.
We can do it as a slate?
Yeah, I think it's, it's all contiguous, is it not?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, I think you can take a look at 16, 17, 18, and 19, is that correct?
Read them into the record, and you can vote now.
Yeah, why don't you read them all into the record, and then, since it's contiguous, then we'll have public comment on the whole, all the items that are contiguous.
Okay, we've read number 16. Item number 17 is public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2013-902-CO to rezone from light retail V classification and medium retail Z classification to general retail G for 39 acres of Swan Nelson, Ernesto Cortez, Clara Bennett subdivisions, and Espidi de Santo Grant located near FM 511 and Baker Road. Item 18 is public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2013-903-CO to rezone from light retail F classification to general retail G classification for seven acres of RA Lake subdivision located FM 511, Noble Pine, and Baker Road. Do you need for me to read 19? Item 19, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2013-904-CO to rezone from dwelling Z classification and light retail V classification to general retail G for 98.05 acres of RA Lake subdivision located near FM 511 and Old Alice Road.
Just for the record, I've, there has been no opposition, P&amp;Z approved, and I've been getting phone calls from owners saying, "When is it going to happen?" So...
Okay, do I have anybody else on public comment?
Move to close?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries.
At this point, I'm going to ask you, there were some last-minute changes, and we weren't able to take them off the agenda yet, but items 20 through 22, I'm going to ask you to table them once more, and...
Move to table?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Public comment, I think we have two?
Two.
Item 25.
Item 25, consideration in action on resolution number 2013-036 to establish the need to build a photovoltaic system and a solar water heater at the youth resource center.
Mayor Commissioners, the city received a grant from the, from CECO, the state, to go ahead and install solar panels at the former Mother Perpetual Health Building, where we will have the youth homeless resource center. And so I'm going to read the resolution which accepts the grant. "A resolution of the Brownsville City Commission establishing the need to build a photovoltaic system and a solar water heater at the youth resource center. The new solar roof and heater will serve as a powerful proponent of renewable energy by providing alternative and renewable source via solar electricity. Whereas the city of Brownsville has a duty to become a leader in renewable energy sustainability, whereas the solar array system will generate renewable energy producing 1.33 milliwatt per hour energy each year, and whereas the solar array system will benefit underserved, low-income, and often homeless youth through free solar education and green job training, and whereas the city of Brownsville will install prefabricated solar arrays onto an existing asphalt parking lot located at 519 East Madison Street. The approximately 24 footing for the array system will be made of 3x3 concrete, 1-inch thick and depth of 2 feet, 2 inches in the ground, I'm sorry, 2 feet into the ground. Steel columns of 18 inches will be attached to the footings by anchor bolts. Whereas the city of Brownsville has procured grant funding from the Texas Comptroller State Energy Conservation Office to reduce the cost for purchase of the solar array system, and whereas the city of Brownsville..." And whereas, the City of Brownsville has determined that it is in the best interest of the city to participate in the Innovative Energy Demonstration Grant Program. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the City of Brownsville desires to purchase and install a solar array system through participation in the Innovative Energy Demonstration Grant Program adopted on this twenty-fifth day of June, two thousand thirteen."
I think it's your turn, Melissa.
Move to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item twenty-six, consideration in action on resolution number twenty thirteen dash zero thirty-seven, as requested by the Texas Department of Transportation, and as a final requirement of the previously authorized agreement between the City of Brownsville and TechDOT to contribute funds for the right-of-way acquisition at the intersection of U.S. seventy-seven Highway eighty-three and FM thirty-two forty-eight.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. This is a request by the Texas Department of Transportation. The agreement has been signed. We recommend approval to execute the resolution, so they can continue with the process.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item twenty-seven, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a new A.C. chiller for the Brownsville South Padra Island International Airport.
Mayor, City Commissioners, the City Commission is asked to consider an act to approve the purchase of a chiller unit. The chiller unit is to be paid for with accumulated passenger facility charge funds that have been pre-approved by the FAA for the use for terminal improvements. The existing unit is needed now, simply because we're not able to wait until, in about a year and a half from now, we're ready to expand the terminal, simply because we have to replace this now. But what we have done is talk with two different air conditioner chiller unit providers, so that we make sure that the unit that we're getting will be able to be used in the future with the expanded terminal. So, as I mentioned, we've identified a source of funding that is not City General Fund money. The FAA has already approved it, and we recommend approval.
Okay. If it's approved tonight, how soon would the air conditioning be fixed at the airport? Because I've been receiving calls all week.
Actually, what will happen is, we will, if we can get the purchase order and so forth tomorrow, the unit that is gonna be placed there is already in stock.
Okay.
So, they will be able to act on this very quickly, as soon as we get the purchase order.
Very important.
Okay. Very good.
Tonight would be...
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries, Larry.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Item twenty-eight, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of two paratransit vehicles for B Metro.
Again, good evening. Staff recommends consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase and delivery of two new twenty thirteen model Type III paratransit vehicles for the Brownsville Metro to creative bus sales from Irving, Texas in the amount of one hundred and thirty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-two dollars and sixty-two cents. This will be done via the Minnesota State Purchasing Contract, which has been reviewed and approved by TechDOT, and reflects compliance with FTA and TechDOT procurement guidelines. The delivery of the two Type I vehicles will be within sixty days after we receive the purchase order. The funding for the buses, for these buses are from TechDOT fifty-three ten grants.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Norma.
Thank you.
Item twenty-nine, consideration in action to award a contract for architectural engineering services for the construction of two safety shelter domes at the Brownsville Public Library Main Branch at Southmost Branch Library.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, as mentioned, this item is related to the two safety shelter domes located at the two public library sites. The legal advertisement for this project appeared in the Brownsville Herald twice, both on May the twenty-fourth, I'm sorry, March twenty-fourth, twenty thirteen, and March thirty-first of twenty thirteen. It was also posted to the city website and the Texas Bid System website. A total of one hundred and twenty-four professional engineering and architect firms received an invitation to participate, and fifty-four of those firms accessed and downloaded the qualification documents. There were no addendums issued for this particular SOQ. On April the seventeenth, qualification statements were received from ten firms. On April the twenty-fifth of twenty thirteen, the Evaluation Review Committee met to discuss the evaluation process and procedures, and to score the proposals. On May the second, a review committee submitted their evaluation criteria to determine a short list of three finalists firms. Then, on May the tenth, the Evaluation Review Committee, along with the Purchasing and Contract Division, interviewed the top three firms at the main library conference room and reranked the firms based on their presentations and responses to questions that were asked by committee members during those interviews. Based on the RFP, the Purchasing and Contracting Office then requested a proposal from the highest-ranked firm for review and negotiations. And on May the twenty-third of twenty thirteen, the Purchasing and Contract Division received draft proposals for each dome from that highest-ranked firm. They reviewed those proposals, and then contacted the highest-ranked firm to negotiate the scope of services and the percentage fee. On June the eighteenth, the Purchasing Division received two revised proposals, and as a result of the negotiation process, the recommended architect and engineering firm and the library department have reached a satisfactory best and final offer. So, based on a June twentieth, twenty thirteen memo from Jerry Hedgecock, the Director of the Public Information Services, the recommendation is as follows. "Consideration in action to award a contract for architectural and engineering design services for the construction of two multi-level safety shelter domes to Leland Eight Gray Architect and Consultants of Salt Lake City, Utah is follows. D R seventeen ninety-one dash three sixty-one at the Southmost Library at a six-point-seven-five percent of the total construction cost of three-point-three million dollars, or a fixed stipulated sum of two-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars. D R seventeen ninety-one dash three sixty-two at the Main Library at a seven-point-one-five percent of the total construction cost of five million, four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand dollars, or fixed stipulated sum of three-hundred-and-ninety-one thousand, five-hundred dollars, or a total architectural and engineering design service cost of six-hundred-and-fourteen-thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty dollars. This recommended firm will serve in the capacity of consulting engineers and architects for pre-design, schematic design, construction documents, bidding and negotiations assistance, construction administration, and directions for cities' geotechnical firm for soil borings. The funding for these services is derived both from, or from, three sources: FEMA federal funds, CDPG funds, and city funds, and our recommendation is for approval."
Jeff, I have a question. Is this the same pull-up of firms that bid it, or submitted bids on the sports park domes?
I know that the firms, the negotiation, or I'm sorry, the proposals were placed on the Brownsville Herald for both the group that went at the sports park and for this group here. In addition to that, for both of these projects, information went out on the Texas Bidnet system, so that same group of one hundred and fifty-plus firms would've had the opportunity to download and submit for both projects, the two that were at the sports park and these two at the libraries.
Okay. Because I think we went with someone else at the sports park, right?
That's correct.
And, I mean, I'm sure they're very capable, this company is. The only concern I have is, in dealing with another city here in Texas, they've completed a project, but the, I guess, the commission or council there hasn't approved their payment. Do we, I mean, I don't know if you're aware of that.
I am aware of those comments being made. I also have a letter from the superintendent of schools, from that particular school, stating that he's very pleased with the project. My understanding is that they have got some issues between the city and FEMA based on the final product. I don't believe it was related, as I understand it, to the construction as much as it was related to FEMA requirements, which have changed over time. That particular firm is, or that particular city, as I recall, was the first city that built one of these shelters within the state of Texas. However, it was not part of the same grant funding that we are working through for these four projects. It was more of a prototype project, and these are under a different funding source, and the criteria is actually a little bit different for these than it was for that one jurisdiction.
Who was the company, the engineering company that got the contract at the sports park?
I believe it's GMS. I think, I think so. Engineering firm?
Chris Patterson.
The sports park domes?
We can find out for him.
Is this the same scoring committee that's used for the, it's a different one?
It's a different bid, and the reason for the difference in the scoring committee was the fact that the sports park domes, obviously, relate it to the sports park with more of a sporting use. Whereas, these domes are located at the public library and are gonna have a different non-shelter use than the other domes.
Okay.
And these are also multi-story domes as compared to those at the sports park.
Do I hear a motion?
Approve.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Jerry.
Thank you.
By the way, Jerry, I was in your library today, and for all you Commissioners, you oughta go out there. The summertime seems like a real fun time for the kids.
Oh, yes. They have a lot of good programs to do.
Thanks. It's great. Appreciate it. Next item?
Item thirty, consideration in action to award a contract for pavement condition survey for the City of Brownsville streets.
Good evening, Honorable and Commissioners. We are actually very excited about this pavement management project. This project will involve video recording all the streets in Brownsville and reading the pavement condition of each street. In addition to the street data collected, this project will also collect information on sidewalks, street signage, traffic signals, and storm drainage inlets, and I recommend approval of this project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item thirty-one, consideration in action to award a contract for street paving and drainage improvements for Tulipon Street.
Good evening again, Honorable Commissioners. This is for the Tulipon Street project. We're proposing to repave the street from Mira Paredes Southmost. It'll be a complete reconstruction with new sidewalks as well on both sides. I recommend approval.
Approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item thirty-two, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a canopy with seventy-two, seventy-seven kilowatt-mounted solar panels at the Mother Perpetual Parking Lot.
Mayor, Commissioners, the Parks and Recreation Staff recommends to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a canopy with seventy-seven kilowatt-mounted solar panels at the Mother Perpetual Parking Lot, which is the Youth Homeless Resource Center, to Arbor Construction of Rancho Viejo, Texas, in the amounts of two-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand. This procurement reflects TIPS contract pricing. Funding for this procurement is available under the Sico, which is a stated Energy Conservation Office grant. I'd like to congratulate the Office of Grant Management for working real hard on that. Took a while here. Project completion shall be within fifty consecutive calendar days. There's two, Stanford Knowles is the architect, and Representative Alex Pena from Arbor Construction and American Solar, they're here in case there's any questions, technical questions or project questions with timelines.
I just, I've never encountered the TIPS contract pricing. Can you explain that to me?
I can, it's TIPS is the Cooperative Purchasing System Proposal. That's what the purchasing department uses. I'm sure they can probably elaborate on that. Would you like to do that?
Good evening. Yeah, the contract that we have under TIPS is a cooperative purchasing system proposal. It allows municipalities like the City of Brownsville under Section seven, ninety-one point zero twenty-five, to use this type of procurement. It's already been procured, and it's like the same as when we bring items to you all, like from Byboard, DIR, GSA. It's a cooperative contract.
Why would this be different? And why did we go this route as opposed to the Byboard?
Well, because we have, we have a deadline to complete this project. The deadline to complete this project, if I'm not mistaken, is August thirty-first?
Because it's through the grant?
It's through the grant, yes. Because of the time that we have to complete this project.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next one?
Item thirty-three, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of a digital radio system and optimization.
Mayor, City Commissioner, this item is, basically, we're optimizing the radio system required by federal law by twenty fifteen, the P-25 compliance. This is a small part of it. We're adding two new antennas, reconfiguring four antennas, and the total cost is fifty-two thousand, eight-hundred-and-eight dollars. All of it's being funded by two grants, an escrow account earmarked for a radio system, and also two thousand and change out of the police forfeiture fund, nothing out of the general fund. It's a radio optimization.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item thirty-four, consideration in action to award a contract for criteria and validation study to define job-related fitness standards for the Brownsville Police Department.
Mayor, City Commission, when Chief Orlando Rodriguez took office, his long-term goal was to have a fit police force. This is part of it. When we call nine-one-one, I think we all deserve an officer who's fit. In order to set fitness standards to minimum fitness standards, we have to have a validation study. This is what we're doing. This company was chosen, I was on the committee, Hoffman and Associates, that they have to come down here, validate our fences, what do we do, how far do we run, and stuff like that. Then we can set our standards and hold our officers accountable.
I think it's a great idea.
Move to approve. Charlie, aren't you glad you're out?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
What did Jerry?
Five seconds.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.